Everyone, welcome to the Finance Committee meeting of Lancaster City Council. It is 6:00 PM. The first item we have on our agenda is Resolution 12423, a resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the construction of pickleball courts at Olive Dale Park for the Lancaster Parks and Recreation Department. This is coming out of service, Mr. Porter.
Yes, Superintendent Gayfield is here. He's going to give us a little bit of an update. We've had some discussion on pickleball courts in the past, and so we've had some developments.
Thank you, members of council. I forgot how tall I am sometimes. Thank you, everybody, for giving me the opportunity to speak to this. We had originally asked for permission to bid this project back in January, if you recall. We did bid it. We received no bids. We bid it twice. We then moved to cooperative purchasing to look for that option, to go ahead and move forward and get the project moving. Unfortunately, we've come to determine through the cooperative purchasing agreement, folks themselves, that we cannot use cooperative purchasing for new construction. It has to be for construction that is basically updating an existing facility. So we were not able to move forward with that. So we have to come back and ask for permission for a fresh resolution to go ahead and bid this project again. The timing is good because if council moves forward with only two readings, it will put it out for bid at the beginning of January, which is the ideal time to be bidding a project like this. So that is why I'm here for you again this evening, talking about pickleball courts and trying to get them built.
Questions for Mr. Gayfield? Mr. Ambers?
I understand that in the last, over the readings we've done for it, it's gone up over 100, about $125,000. Is there a point where you guys are almost going to look at it and think like, that's just too much money at this point? Or you're just willing to, because I know it's grant money.
It's actually CARES Act money that's in the parks budget. So we think that the 425, kind of answering, giving you a long answer to it, the original engineer's estimate after reviewing it, after receiving no bids, we feel it was too low. So working with the engineer's office, we came up with the new number that we're presenting to you tonight. We feel that's going to cover the cost of it, and the demand is there for the pickleball courts. I think it's a good, and the park board, I think, agrees that it's a good expense for the residents of the community because there is a high demand for it. It is a facility that we don't have currently.
Other questions?
If you wouldn't mind, just give me a little rundown. How many courts will it actually be?
Eight. That's a good question. Eight courts, I believe.
We have fencing things around it as well?
Yeah. It'll be pickleball dedicated, it'll be fenced, courts will be fenced between, and we'll actually, we'll put in steps and ADA accessible ramp to get to the pickleball courts itself as part of the project, yes.
Right. Okay.
Anyone else? All right. Mr. Porter, what's your pleasure?
Two readings with Mrs. Kreitz is my second.
Two readings and Mrs. Kreitz's second on 12423. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item we have on our agenda is Resolution 12523, a resolution to increase and decrease appropriations in the municipal court judicial drug court Adam H. Fund. Tamara Bartek is here to speak about this.
Good evening, everyone. Municipal Court probation department has been awarded a federal BJA grant just short of $1 million for Veterans Treatment Court program over the next four years. This has been an amazing opportunity. We were just notified the very end of September of this opportunity, though, and we have since hired a Veterans Treatment Court probation officer for the grant that started October 1st. Because of that and the need to differentiate the money between our drug court money and our Veterans Treatment Court money, we are requesting to decrease appropriations from our drug court monies and increase appropriations into our Veterans Treatment Court fund, just money in, money out, in order to make sure that we are able to pay our probation officer and continue the program through the end of the year. Because the probation officer has started, we are requesting one reading on this.
Questions for Ms. Bartek? So this is, this is actually great news, that we're able to move forward with this drug court program. I know that's something that you've been involved with for some time, and getting awarded these grants, not everyone gets these grants, is that right?
What's that?
Not everyone receives these grants.
No, no.
It's a competitive thing, I believe.
And this grant is going, it funds a lot of sober support options for the veterans, funds a CrossFit program for veterans only. It funds, we started a disc golf program at Keller Kern Park for the veterans. So a lot of things for sober support activities to help keep them sober and engaged in the community long term.
I think that's great news.
Thank you.
So our specialty docket at Municipal Court, I believe, is one of the best in the state.
Thank you.
And I'm proud of what we're doing there. So I am going to ask for suspension tonight. Mrs. Kreitz, would you be the second on this?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item we have on our agenda is Resolution 12623, a resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance and amend the certificate of appropriations with the county auditor and the Point 45 Police and Fire Levy Fund, 2021 Levy Fund. Chief Snyder, you want to give us an overview of this?
Sure. Thank you, members of council. This is to help appropriate and adjust our overtime costs in the police department budget. Essentially, what happened is we funded large-scale events or staffing for large-scale events this year at the police department for the city, things such as Fort Villar, the festival, the fair, busy nights at the fair, so we could have appropriate amount of officers at these events. And in 2022, we budgeted for 2023, the estimated cost for those. I would say that the estimated budget was correct, however, the mistake is entirely on me. We did get the vendors to pay into that and to compensate the city, and I, in my own defense, but again.
Yep, there we go.
That's okay.
All right. Who didn't hear me? No, I'm just kidding. So that mistake's entirely on me. We did get compensated for those events. The estimations are correct, so the money is there, but I did not take from the revenue account and put into the expenditure account, and that is on me. So I'm asking to take from that 251 fund and to go back into the overtime account so I can pay for overtime at the end of the year. To explain the cost, just to give you a quick synopsis of the cost, and obviously, I'll answer any questions. The amount is a little over 126,000. However, I want everyone to know it's likely going to be about half of that because at the end of the year, at the police department, like other departments, officers and staff can cash out up to 100 hours of their comp time, so they have to stay at 100 hours. So the estimation, if I took everybody in the police department, all 94 employees, and had them all cash out down to 100 hours, that's around $50,000. And then just price a business through the end of the year for typical overtime is about 15, so that's 65,000. What I did was added the extra amount, because every single employee at the PD cashed out all of their overtime. That's not going to happen, but in the event it did, I did not want to have to come back and fix a mistake again. So entirely on me. I just want everyone to know, though, that the money is there. We're not missing the money, and I apologize for the effort it's going to take to correct this, so. Any questions?
Questions for Chief?
Just real quick, wasn't it $80,000 or so that you got?
Yes.
From a revenue standpoint?
Yeah, so essentially, if I paid the 50,000 to get everybody at 100, and then normal operating cost to 15,000, what I budgeted for was the typical cost of payouts under 100 is right around maybe 5,000 or 10,000. So that puts me right at about 75-ish, so that number's on. However, in my infinite wisdom, I did not move that money over. So I'm a little bit worried that everybody in the PD, it would be my luck, would cash out all of their comp time, and I'd be right back up here. So essentially, in the end, it's a wash because if they don't do that, it just goes back into the fund in a split, like nothing happened, so.
Anyone else have questions? So this is something that, as the chief explained, we're moving it all in one movement versus maybe coming in three or four times during the year to move money.
Yes, yeah.
And that would move from that revenue fund to the overtime account to cover what we're doing tonight.
Correct. And if I might add, next year, I will check that. I've been checking the overtime account and thought I was okay, and the fair absolutely obliterated us. I did not see that coming, and it's now in need of that movement. So next year, I will move that after each event, and we should be safe.
Last chance, anyone else have questions? If not, Mr. Ailes, will you be the second?
Yes.
And I will ask for suspension so this can be moved and employees can be paid.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. The next item on our agenda is Resolution 12723, a resolution authorizing the City of Lancaster to apply for funding from the State of Ohio Capitol Budget. This is coming out of Economic Development. Mr. Ailes?
Yes, Lynn is approaching the podium here.
Good evening. We have an opportunity every two years to apply to the State of Ohio. They make funds available through the Capitol Budget. This year, general revenue funds are available for a one-time special community investment fund of $700 million. So we are planning, we would like to apply for three projects, and we will apply for all three. Our legislators will decide which ones they want to put forward on our behalf. So we have the clock tower and Bell and Clock Tower at City Hall, requesting funds for that, for the repair of that as part of our City Hall renovation and preserving our cultural and historic asset there. Also, to do renovations at the, our improvements at the Elmwood Park. There's a playground there that needs to be, or can be upgraded. We'd like to upgrade that playground equipment and put in some more pickleball courts there, replacing those tennis courts. The third project is really the one that we are targeting for the one-time community investment fund, and that is the Eastside Industrial Connector feasibility study. So many of you came to the presentation with the Economic Development Director, the engineer, the planning director, and myself, talking about the Eastside Industrial Connector, the proposed Eastside Industrial Connector. We have done a planning study. The next step is to do a feasibility study, which is a more in-depth study on that.
Questions, anyone? Mr. Ailes?
I don't, two years ago, did we not apply for the clock tower last time as well?
We have applied for the clock tower in the past. You're correct.
And did we get any money for it last time?
We did not.
Have we spoke at all with our state rep about what the reasoning was?
I have not.
Because, so the only reason I ask is because from the understanding I have is that that sort of, from, if you're doing it from the regular Capitol Budget, not the one-time strategic fund, is that sort of project would not, is not typically funded because it is on a municipal building. So I just wondered if there was any other insight about, like, other projects that might be more beneficial than one that's not typically funded.
That's a great point, and I guess that's why we're going at it from the angle of cultural and historical significance. And I appreciate any insights that we can get in terms of that project, and certainly, if it will not be well-received, we would want to put something else forward. We have until December 18th, so time is of the essence, but we do have one more reading, so if we needed to change it, we could. Thank you.
I could be way off here, but Elmwood, so Elmwood is off of Lawrence Street, correct? So, and don't get me wrong, the playground or what used to be tennis courts and basketball courts need some help, but if memory serves me correctly, and that's why I'm hesitant here, is we were having a conversation in Public Works at one point with the cemetery department about the fact that we're running out of places, or we're running out of space in our cemeteries to bury folks. So one of those options that we discussed, I thought, was Elmwood Park or Elmwood Cemetery, which would be removing some of that ignored tennis court type of stuff, so that's where I'm just throwing that out there. Didn't we have that conversation?
So I could speak to that. We talked about the undeveloped part on the far western side of Elmwood Park. There's nothing developed there. We talked about if the parks had no need for that court area like this, we'd entertain that. But that's what was really discussed, that vacant plot. Now, you know, that's really, you're right, there was discussion about that.
I just remember we talked about the fact that we were, that would be space that we might have to use moving forward, so this would change that thought process as well. I just wanted to check.
Good memory.
Okay. It's usually not.
Are you going to be coming back up for developmental updates later, or?
No.
Okay, well, may I ask a question then?
Certainly.
You and I had met a couple, will be two weeks, and I've asked you before, I know you're doing these other projects, you're asking for more funding and this and that. Can you please send us something within the last year or two of projects that actually have been completed by your department, that have actually been, because I know we still, no lead abatement has been done at all, even though we've had seven in the pipeline, one ready to go, nothing's ever been done. So we're sitting on these grants. So I would like to get a rundown for the last two years. I think council would maybe like to know, too, all projects that have actually been completed by the grants.
Sure.
So, thank you.
So my only thought on the Elmwood Park, that's a true neighborhood park that I personally would love to see brought back up to use. There is some usage over there now, but that facility is in desperate need of upgrade. So that's my two cents on Elmwood Park.
I don't disagree. We were just, like, that jumped into my mind, like, I thought we were, yeah.
Anyone else? All right. Mr. Ailes, what is your pleasure?
First of two readings.
Two readings. Mr. Schoonover's the second on this one. Thank you. The next item we have on our agenda is Resolution 12823, a resolution to increase receipts appropriate from the unencumbered balance and amend the certificate of other sources and appropriations with the county auditor and the escrow fund. I'm not sure who uttered or nettles.
Yes, this is a project, as it states, the Lawrence Street Water Pollution Control Facility has an improvement project with Kokosing that they got an escrow agreement to set aside those funds, and we set aside those, and I did not think that they were going to be completed before the end of 2023. Lo and behold, I think they're probably pretty much completed, that we have a drawdown to pay Kokosing for these funds that have been escrowed. So I kind of need to set a revenue and an expense budget so we can, to get those funds properly booked.
So these funds were placed in the escrow, I assume by Kokosing, and now?
There was a request by Kokosing, so we, I created the fund, moved them over, the treasurer has them for, and now we've paid them out, it's closing it, so I didn't assume it was going to happen in 2023 and in 2024, and it's happening at year-end where they were, yeah, for that portion, so we just need to get those funds.
Do readings work for that?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. Any questions on that? Mr. Ailes, will you be the second?
Yes.
And we'll do two readings on 12823. Resolution 12923, a resolution authorizing the City of Lancaster to apply for a federal grant to help an improvement project on East Main Street, to help fund a improvement on, a project on East Main Street. Mr. Schonk, I have you speaking on this.
Actually, Jeff here, our assistant city engineer, and he'll be speaking, addressing several of these resolutions tonight. Chairman.
Martins Park, what it is, is to apply for a safety grant, and the scope of the product that we're putting forward is to widen the road from just east of Ewing to just for about 800 feet to just short of Froggy's where the US-22 con narrows down, is to widen that up a little bit and to install sidewalks from Ewing to the Community Development Center across from the old Big Bear. And so it'll be sidewalks on both sides and widening the road. And the grant that we're applying for, it'll, it can help cover right-of-way acquisition, right-of-way design and construction. So we're applying for a grant, and we're hoping to coincide that grant with another grant we're getting to, what's with the urban paving? We're trying to tack it on to an urban paving project that we're doing with the state that is paving that section of road at that time, we're trying to match those two projects so they happen at the same time.
That would be great. The only question I have, Jeff, is the, says the balance of funding for the project would come from unencumbered balance in the general fund. Should that be the three-mill levy, or was it written as general fund purposely that way?
It was purposely the general fund because we're hoping to not use three-mill levy for that money because this is all, it's not paving, it's widening.
It's widening.
It's not straight paving. We're trying to keep the three-mill levy to strictly paving projects until we get, you know, fully caught up with the paving, and so we're wanting to find other sources to pay for things like the widening and sidewalks.
Wow, okay, that makes sense. Questions?
Not so much questions as comments. There's a whole lot of utilities you've got to move to make this happen. Seems like that narrow corridor there has a bunch of stuff in the way.
This will be a very challenging project, at least. There's no doubt about that.
In property.
But especially the sidewalks, I mean, there's a path that's worn into the dirt now. There's people, you know, wheelchairs and, you know, running down the side of the road in the outside lane right now because they can't get through there. So I think it's a needed project.
Yeah, I'm aware of at least one vehicle wheelchair accident, possibly more, but at least one. Anyone have any additional questions? Yes, Ms. Teener?
I know it would be balanced, whatever, the general fund or whatever, like you said, hopefully we won't have to. However, this is three readings, and it's applying for a grant, so should we wait? Because sometimes it's best to get in there because, I don't know, we should go through readings.
Well, I mean, the first step we got to do is apply for the grant. We may get it, we may not. If we get, actually get the grant, then there'll be some other things, more detail put into it, and then we'll come back again to actually enter into the agreement and, you know, share in any design cost and local share in the design side.
Well, I know we don't like to suspend and that, but since it's applying for, I don't know if we should make two readings suspend, go ahead and go to three, but the quicker we get in there and they see us, maybe, you know, I don't know. That's just my thought.
What's the, what's the timing, the deadline for application?
The deadline for this application is end of January.
The end of January.
So I'm putting this in in enough time to allow three readings. If you only want to do one reading, I certainly won't get in your way.
I don't disagree with Ms. Teener that if all we're doing is applying for a grant, we're not spending money. Why are we doing three readings?
What?
We can leave that up to Mr. Schoonover.
I say yes to everything.
But I have to know.
Otterder Nettles?
I've just got a simple question, and it's mine. What's the percentage of the local match? Is it an 80/20, or do we know what percentage?
It's an 80/20 grant.
I just didn't know if you stated it, and I missed it. It's 80/20.
It's an 80/20 grant.
All right, so.
20 on our side.
20%, yes. So 20% is what general fund would have to. Do you have even an estimate of what this project's going to cost?
Not yet. I'm working on that this time.
Keep in mind that that would all come back to you, and council would make a decision on how it's paid for, et cetera, et cetera.
Right.
I asked what year this Main Street project would be paid by ODOT.
Right now, what we're applying for, it would be constructed in 2027.
So we're usually always about three years out when we do projects like this.
Additional questions?
But we do need to submit for funding early, like you said, get that all arranged as we move forward with it.
All right. Mr. Schoonover, what's your pleasure?
I'm in agreement. I don't mind suspension when we're just applying for a grant, so I'll ask for suspension and we can get something off of our 72 page.
Who's your other Public Works member?
It's 51.
Other than Mr. Porter?
Other than Mr. Porter is going to be Mr. James.
Mr. James, would you second that?
I will do that.
So we're going to ask for suspension on 12923. Mr. James will be the second. Mr. Baird, you can stay right there.
I'm staying here.
The next item we have on the agenda is Resolution 13023, a resolution authorizing SSD to enter into a local public agency, federal-local LET project agreement with ODOT for the Sixth Avenue Bridge over Federer's Run Replacement Project, PID 120475, and authorize SSD to enter into a design pre-construction services contract with various consultants. This is coming out of Public Works. Mr. Schoonover?
And I'll let Jeff continue with this one.
This is the bridge that is in extremely bad shape, in need of replacement. We applied for a grant, that was an earlier resolution. We've gotten the grant, and now we're moving forward. I was able to, on top of the grant, I applied for another allocation that, it's not a grant, it's just where they give you money if you apply for it and you have a grant, and they tack this on. It's an extra $200,000 to pay for design services. So this resolution is to enter into the agreement, and the agreement is it's just short of $2 million for construction, and on top of that, we'll also get an additional $200,000 to go towards design services for the bridge.
If we all recall when they did the paving project, they discovered, the Sixth Avenue paving project, they discovered this issue was more significant than.
Exactly. During paving operations, what this is, that there's a concrete deck and concrete beams, and they paved over it, so you couldn't see the concrete. And when they milled the concrete off, we were able to get to the concrete, and the concrete was severely deteriorated. No actual strength left in the top, like, five to six inches, and thereafter, we did some testing on that, and we did a load rating, that's why the bridge is currently load-rated, and then we immediately, immediately, you know, went after funds to try to replace it so we could keep it open and replace it. I mean, the best time, the thing to do is to realize when your bridges or any infrastructure is going to go bad and have it so that you can, you know, shut the road down or whatever, and then tear it out and replace it rather than, oh, it's an emergency, and then have to wait three years for plans and everything else, and then do construction. So we're trying to stay on top of the ball and, you know, and make it so that that road is closed to the shortest possible time.
Additional questions? Anyone? Yes?
Timing on replacement of it, what do you think?
Right now, it's currently, per the grant, is scheduled for 2027 construction, but we have it on a schedule for 2026, and it's not uncommon that if you have all of your ducks in a row and plans done and, you know, all your right-of-way acquired, you can get early because there'll be some other project that gets waylaid. So it's very common. So we're hoping to get it a year early, 2026, but the actual grant is for construction year 2027.
Anyone else? Additional questions? Mr. Schoonover? Your pleasure.
We can stay with three readings on this one, yes?
Mr. James is second.
Mr. James is second.
Thank you. Looks like you're here again. The next item on our agenda is Resolution 13123, a resolution authorizing the SSD to enter into a local public authority, federal-local LET project agreement with the State of Ohio Department of Transportation for the Bowing Road Improvement Project. This is coming out of Public Works. Mr. Schoonover? Mr. Baird?
Yeah, is on this, is, we get federal grant money, which is STP money, on an annual basis, and we've scheduled this as an STP project, which is going to be federal grant money. It's, right now, is going to be a 95% federal, 5% local match, and it's to... And it's to re-surface Bovin from the Corporal Line all the way up to Lincoln Avenue.
Questions on this piece of legislation? I think it's pretty straightforward.
Yep.
What's your pleasure, Mr. Schoonover?
This one will be three readings. I did want to, since we had three pieces in a row there, I did kind of want to.
80/20.
Yeah, 80/20.
Go ahead.
I did kind of want to point out even for the new council people in the room and it's, road money, street money comes from so many different places, like, it still can make your head spin. So whether you're on Public Works or you come to those meetings, because I guarantee the one thing that constituents will ask you about regardless of what ward you're in or anything like that is, hey, what's up with the street paving? And it is kind of nice to, to get that information that we get so many funds from so many different places. It's really, it's not a simple, short answer. So the more that you're informed on it, the better because six years in, it's still like, okay, which pot of money was that again? Which pot of money is this and, and the local match? So for sure, as we roll into the new terms with, with everyone, whether you're staying on or whether you're new, or just the general public, like, Public Works and the Street Department stuff is, it's complicated and it's worth asking questions to, to learn where all the money's coming from. So.
Good point.
My spiel.
Any other questions on this particular piece? Yes, Mr. James?
Does it make sense for us to go to two readings on this one and the one just before Just to kind of get it off of our, our docket for the end of the year?
That's up to you guys. I can suspend on all these because we know what pot of money we're talking about, but a lot of times it's not, it's not that simple.
We can, we can do two readings and finish it next week or next meeting if you want.
Yep, that's fine. I can.
The one before you. The three of them in a row.
We'll do suspension, we're going to do suspension on that first one and then two readings on, yeah.
On the other two.
On 130 and 131.
Thank you.
So suspension on 29, 129, two readings on 130 and two readings on 131. So, and Mr. Porter is your second on that, 131.
Yep.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Resolution 13223, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into pre-annexation agreement with Double Bogey Holdings LLC for parcel number, I'm not going to read the parcel numbers, consisting of 45.1 plus or minus acres in Pleasant Township and declared emergency. This is coming out of Economic Development, Mr. Ailes.
I guess the mayor has agreed to discuss this.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes. This is a project that we've been working on since the spring of 2022 when the last of the one generation of the Scholl family passed away. This is the parcel that's east of Sheridan Drive, west of Independence and south of Thomas Ewing School. It abuts Thomas Ewing School. The plan is for 122 single-family homes on the north end of the parcel, closest to Thomas Ewing, and I believe 196 apartment units on the south end. So this has been a long time coming and a lot of work put in by city departments to get to this point, but we're here and this is first stage in annexation so this project can get rolling.
Seeing no questions, Mr. Ailes, what's your pleasure?
First of two readings.
Two readings, Mr. Schoonover is the second?
Yes.
The next item on our agenda is Ordinance 4323, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a master equipment lease purchase agreement and related equipment scheduled for the purposes of acquiring two Kubota LX26 tractors with loaders and a Kubota RTV XG850 utility vehicle and related equipment for the Lancaster Cemetery Department. Mr. Deetz? Do you want to explain this to us, please?
Good evening, council. Every five years, we've been on a rotating loan agreement, working with the auditor. What this is, we're at the end of a five-year loan for both the cemetery and LDOT for purchases we made back in 2018. And what we're wanting to do is basically renew this. The cemetery costs can be about the same as it was five years ago, so it's a very manageable five-year payoff for the budget. And LDOT's actually reduced quite a bit because we don't need quite as much equipment as we did five years ago. So basically, this is kind of a, every five-year kind of a deal we come to you for. And it, what it does for us is it allows us to make large purchases without a huge hit to our fund balance as we can pay it over time.
Questions for Mr. Deetz? We've, we've done a couple of these master equipment lease agreements for other departments that seem to work pretty well and allow us to avoid that high upfront cost of purchasing equipment outright. So, any questions?
And these can go three readings.
We'll do two, two readings. Mrs. Kreitz, will you be the second on this?
Yes.
Please remain there for, we'll have questions on the second one. Ordinance 4423, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a master equipment lease purchase agreement and related equipment schedule for the purchase, for the purpose of acquiring a Dodge Ram 450 cab and chassis, a Dodge Ram 2500 pickup truck, 11-inch, 11-foot galleon dump truck bed, hydraulic system, a Pecan rotor knife mower head? That's interesting. And Ace body utility truck bed and related equipment for, for LDOT. This is coming out of finance. Just follow up on this equipment for us.
Same situation for LDOT. We'd like to purchase these over the next five years. The dump bed and the hydraulic system are going on the new cabin chassis that we're getting next month that I had to come to you guys for, for an advance from the fund balance to pay that truck off. We were expecting next year we get that in-house. Our guys will actually mount the bed and mount the hydraulics, get that truck running. The utility bed, the one utility bed is for our platform truck, which we use to work on the signals and some sign work and downtown streetlights. Several of the bins are rusting through. The cabin chassis are fine, we just need to replace the bed. So we'll take this bed off and put the new one on. The other cabin chassis, we have a, a bed sitting in our shop that we want to basically rebuild one of the existing trucks, which is for our mechanic slash stormwater activities so we can get, gives us an extra vehicle. So when we send crews out on stormwater control, catch base and maintenance, that kind of thing, we can send two crews out instead of one. And the other pickup truck is to replace an older one that we're experiencing some problems as we use those trucks to pull our, our, I know what it's called. It's the trailers we put hot mix in when we go fill pottles. And they get very heavy, so the heavier transmission on this truck, we'll, we'll pull that unit a little easier, make it last a little longer.
Questions for Mr. Deetz? Another item of interest that, we'll enter into that agreement in '24, but the loan repayment won't start till '25.
Correct.
On both of these pieces, is that correct?
Correct.
All right.
And the, the mower attachment is actually a, a attachment for our, one of our excavators. It's more of a stump grinding type of apparatus where we can reach over guardrails and take care of smaller brush and get them, get them knocked down with one file swoop versus sending guys out with chainsaws and then trying to chip things up. This thing will actually cut it down and chip it up and leave you a nice little pile of chippings that don't really have to be hauled away.
Sounds good.
All right.
Last chance for any questions. Seeing none, Mr. Ailes, will you be the second on that?
Yes.
We'll do two readings. Thank you. The next item we have on our agenda, Ordinance 4623, an ordinance to amend the zoning map subject to the passage of the annexation of Metro Development's 8.9 plus or minus acres in Gredefield Township. It's coming out of Economic Development, Mr. Ailes.
46, hold one, just wait a minute. That is the first of three readings.
Law Director Hall, would you go over this real quick for us?
Sure, absolutely. So we have previously, previously talked about the Metro Development project that's over off North Columbus Street. A parcel, the 8.9 acres is the parcel there that is to be annexed into the city limits, but that project also entails two parcels that are already in the city limits off of Hubbard Drive. They had joined. And so this piece is to change the zoning of those two parcels that are already in the city limits. They've been zoned service industrial based on the surrounding, you know, intensity of use in that Hubbard Drive business park, but it does back up to River Valley Highlands, obviously. And so the developer is asking for residential multifamily instead of that service industrial zoning, which would allow for them to put their development on that parcel to be annexed and then these, these two Hubbard Drive parcels as well. This has to go to Planning Commission, so that will happen on December 14th. You will have a public hearing here on December 11th. The timing is a little wacky, but as I explained, it's in the email that I sent out earlier, it is because you only have one meeting in December and so we need to get the public hearing in before everything gets done in January.
Question for Mrs. Hall. Seeing none, what's your pleasure, Mr. Ailes?
First of three readings.
Three readings with the public hearing as required on this one.
Right.
And I'll be the second on that. Next items, Ordinance 4723, an ordinance to amend Lancaster Codified Ordinance Part One Administrative Code Title IX Taxation, Chapter 183 Municipal Income Tax effective January 1, 2018, Section 183.013 Allocation of Funds of the Codified Ordinance of the City of Lancaster. This is something I initiated after some conversations with other members and the administration. This would raise our capital improvement allocation from .05 to .10. And as you can see, what that does for the capital improvement fund is it, it doubles it in 2024 and it currently brings in approximately 715,000 plus and this would take it to 1.4 million plus in 2024. This is something council can set, you know, going into a new year, which is actually what I assume the auditor and tax, income tax commissioner prefers. We wouldn't want to change something in the middle of the year. So that's why it's on our table now and set for two readings. Again, I think we have an opportunity to do, to do this and these funds would be dedicated specifically for capital improvement funding through the general fund. Is that right?
It's what you're setting aside and you're taking the funds and taking them from general. That's.
And setting them aside for capital improvement.
We're setting them aside into the capital improvement fund 3020.
And then they become dedicated for that purpose.
Yes.
So does everybody understand that? So if, for whatever reason, we saw that this allocation was higher than you preferred, you can change it going into next year or you can leave it or you could, you could make it higher. It's council's preference on that. But we currently are, you know, less than three-quarters of a million dollars is going into the capital improvement fund and we have capital improvement projects that need to be addressed and this would allow us to have additional funding for that purpose. So again, this is something I brought forward and certainly I'm open to input from anybody, but it makes sense to me that we should probably do this. So questions, comments, observations? Seeing none, I'm going to ask Mrs. Kreitz to second this and we will do two readings.
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any departmental updates? Chief Snyder?
I just need to wing this real quick because I saw Tamara here and I wanted to speak to her veterans program. Our officers took part in that, what was that, two weeks ago, I believe? And I don't have a wide scope of experience with it. I just know the little bit that Tamara has described about it and the officers that participated in that were very, very, very thankful to even participate. And one of their officers actually made a connection that he had experience with working patrol, which is pretty vital and actually pretty cool. So just a little firsthand knowledge on our program that I think it's worth it and I hope it continues and I think it's an awesome thing that she's doing. So I just really appreciate that work that she does. So that's all I really had to say.
Thank you, chief.
Thanks. And I left my clipboard up here, so that was a good excuse.
Are there any other departmental updates? Yes?
Mr. McDaniel, I have Jeff Baird here with us right now. I thought if there's any other discussion about the Martin Street Bridge, the Martins Park Bridge, if that could happen right now. I know that we sent out some information to you, but I wanted to fulfill the promise that we'd have on here. If you'd rather have that discussion later, that's fine. We're at the time of the resolution, that's okay as well. Just wanted to open that door up where it feels like.
Anyone have questions for Mr. Baird regarding the Martins Park Bridge? Yes, Mr. James?
Not so much a question, but a comment. I think it's important for us to, as you planned, first of all, widen the bridge and secondly, make sure it's on a good foundation. So I, I would, I'm, I'm very much in, in agreement with what you're doing.
Thank you. Additional questions?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment.
Okay.
Excuse me. I wanted to follow up on a comment that I made during the last council meeting. I represented that I had not heard a response from Engineer Shank on my previous questions about the Martins Park Bridge. Upon checking my emails, I discovered that I had, had actually in fact received a response, I believe from yourself and from his office prior to that council meeting. After reviewing that email, I verified it does in fact answer my questions and I apologize for any inadvertent, misrepresentation on that. Sorry about that.
Oh, no problem at all. Any other questions for Mr. Baird? So while, while we're on this particular topic, I want to thank Director Martin for bringing this up. I am going to offer an amendment. You've seen it in your legislation. This will, based on our discussions at the last meeting and some input from some, some fellow council people, I believe it'll be a 75/25 split and Parks will be participating in the replacement of the bridge and that, those numbers are in the legislation, specific numbers on what each side is going to contribute. So it'd be capital improvement funding and park funding to pay for the replacement of this bridge. So, yes, Mr. James?
I think it's probably worth noting too that in our previous conversation before the meeting started, you said this bridge is going to be a 50-year bridge.
It should last 75-plus years as it's currently designed.
Additional comments, questions, input? All right, any other departmental updates? Seeing none, I'll move to President Porter for tonight's meeting prep.
Thank you, Chairman McDaniel. We have two pieces of legislation on this evening that we're going to take a look at during meeting prep. Temporary Ordinance 4523 coming out of the Law Committee.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kreitz?
Thank you. This piece of legislation would provide an allowance for city vehicles that would fall under the state prohibition of utility vehicles on the roadways and would allow for those to operate on the roadway for city purposes. For example, the gas department has a current vehicle that could potentially fall under that, that be a violation of that law and would be categorized as that type of vehicle. Law Director, did you want to add anything additional to that? Yeah, thank you, ma'am. It's not just the gas department, but the Parks Department has utility vehicles that they would like to be able to operate on the roadway legally. The police department might have some, the fire department, and then Lancaster City Schools as well would be covered by this. Lancaster City Schools uses utility vehicles to salt and plow all of their facilities and it would be easier for them if they could at times operate on the roadway lawfully. So this would cover the, both the city operation of utility vehicles and then the city schools' operation of utility vehicles on the streets, but it wouldn't allow for any other utility vehicles to be operated on the public roadways, as has always been the, the situation here in Lancaster. Thank you.
Thanks.
And, and when we're talking. And when we're talking about the concept of utility vehicles, we're talking about the side-by-side vehicles, much like the Kubota that we've got in the legislation this evening. Now, would, I know that the Sid and Destination Downtown have one that operates on the sidewalks. Would that be covered at all?
So the sidewalks are not actually roadways, which are governed by the Ohio Revised Code. So sidewalk is a local regulation, and we don't have anything currently that doesn't permit that vehicle in particular. Now, the issue is how these vehicles are categorized. That one is such a small vehicle that I don't know that it even fits the definition of a utility vehicle because it's based on horsepower, braking power, things like that. And I honestly, I mean, what they're operating is less than a golf cart in terms of power and size. So it would be fine to continue to be operated on the sidewalks.
Okay.
Yep.
I just wondered how it would get to the sidewalks. I mean, obviously, it's got to be somewhere on the street to get to a sidewalk.
I honestly don't know where they park it presently.
It's parked in a garage on East Chestnut Street. So it would, it probably operates in the alley to get down to the first sidewalk, which would be called on the street, the here sidewalk.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other discussion related to that? Anything? Okay. And then we're going to move to temporary ordinance forty-eight twenty-three out of IT Telecom. It's the amateur radio.
Yes, I'm going to have John Hilliard come up and speak on this. They've been in, the amateur radio club's been around here for a long time. And actually, they're kind of like a block watch over the airwaves. They let us know about things going on. They do the parades. They let us know about the weather. They're just kind of very helpful. This is no cost to us, but, Mr. Hilliard, can you explain?
Lancaster Fairfield County Amateur Radio Club has been around since nineteen fifty-nine. And from nineteen fifty-nine till, oh, it was two thousand and something, I think it was, two thousand and four, they were located in the basement of City Hall. And we had a clubhouse there. We had antennas on the roof of the adjacent building, which is the mayor's house now, I think. That was a bank, if I remember right, back then. But we survived there for many years. And we had a chance to move out to the old Clarence Miller, or the Clarence Miller stuff out there on thirty-seven. And of course, we were there for about twenty years. And they, they sold it, got rid of it. And so we now have our clubhouse with the EMA on the East Main Street. But all during this time, we've had antennas, we've used antenna, erected antenna towers. One of them on Waterworks Hill up there because it's high location. We put that up in nineteen seventy-eight after the big blizzard. We had a hard time communicating with the state EMA up in Columbus. And adding that tower, it made a big difference if anything were to happen again, you know, there are emergencies. Luckily, it didn't have any more snowstorms like that. But they could happen. Anything could happen. But what I understand is the tower at the firehouse and the tower at Waterworks Hill, both are about two hundred-foot towers. You guys are not going to be using those any longer. I guess you're going with newer technology and so forth. Our radio club depends on actually the old technology rather than the new. And this would give us a chance, if we could locate our repeater system in the abandoned radio transmitter buildings that you have already on those towers. And that would give us communication better around Fairfield County and also, you know, Stadium A in Columbus and that sort of thing. So working with Paul to try to get that done. We've already, the club's rebuilt, the building, Firehouse One was pretty bad shape. We put a new roof on it and doors and done some work inside, cleaned the place up. And the other site at Waterworks Hill, the two hundred-foot tower, we've cleaned that all out, cleaned it up quite a bit. And we've installed some of our antenna, or some of our radio equipment there to see how it would work out for us. And it works really, really well. So I would like to ask that you help us out and give us some kind of a, whatever legislation, a pause come up, I haven't even read it. So if there's any way you could help us out, and we'd be glad to take care of the buildings and, you know, what we can do with our funds, which are kind of limited. But I think it'd be good for the community. There's something new that we've started about a year ago, and that's installing a GMRS repeater system. And it's on the air, and it's, it can be used by anybody. They don't have to be a licensed ham operator. They can have a simple GMRS license, which is about ten dollars for the light, or, excuse me, twenty dollars for the license that'll last you, I think, five, five to ten years. So you give your kids walkie-talkies and, you know, it's just a way of, a different way of communicating. It doesn't necessarily have, you know, all the glitter of the phones and all that stuff and everything. It's more of a tamed-down thing. But, you know, when, it doesn't take much to kill a cell tower. So imagine if all the cell towers went off right now, what would you do? You know? So you'd say, boy, I wish I had that old CB radio I had, or, you know, this or that. Well, CB isn't much going on there anymore, but ham radio's doing very well. So we'd like for you to consider, consider our proposal and so forth.
We thought, three readings, I'd have Mr. Ailers be my second. But you see three readings, so that would go into January. So since it's been sponsored, if everybody's in agreement for it to move forward, and then I'll still sponsor it, and Mr. Ailers will still be the second in January.
Anybody else? Any further discussion on that?
So if you don't know, Mr. Hilliard, he worked for the city, right? You were electrical department?
I retired after thirty years with the city in two thousand and seven.
Back in the day, we had an electrical department separate from the street department.
Right.
He ran that. We have had his equipment at the engine houses for a long time. So the city has a long history of supporting this group. And I think now we're just trying to make it official, you know, legally.
All right.
We appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charles.
Okay. Thank you.
We have nothing further on meeting prep.
Okay. Do we have any other items for finance? I have one I want to formally announce and, I guess, make sure everyone is fully aware. We discussed a special finance committee meeting at our last council meeting. That meeting will take place on December fourth at six P M in the eighteen ninety-seven room, specifically to discuss the two thousand twenty-four budget and pay ordinances, as well as possibly collective bargaining agreements that may be ready to go. We hope. So specifically for those agenda items, and we're going to ask that if you have any particular budget item that you feel you want answers for, reach out to Director Martin. He can see that the appropriate department head is there to answer those questions, or we can get those answered in advance. But I believe the safety
Yes, both our chiefs are planning to be there at that meeting as well. Those budgets are large, so I've just asked for them to actually be there. And anybody else you would like there, just, you know, specifically, I'd be glad to have them come.
So keep that in mind. Specific questions, we can try to get them answered ahead of time. Or if you think it's something we want to bring to that meeting, we can do all those at that particular meeting. But also, this is an opportunity. Jot down your questions, answer them, and we'll try to answer them at that budget hearing. And then we'll have final reading, hopefully, on the budget on December eleventh, so that we have a budget going into two thousand twenty-four, as well as the appropriate pay ordinances in place for our employees in two thousand twenty-four.
Would it be appropriate to invite the newly-elected council people to that meeting?
I would encourage
They're not going to vote on it.
Yes. If they're not here tonight to hear this, we'll reach out to them.
It's two thousand twenty-four, so.
Yep, that sounds great. That's, unless we have any others for, any other items for finance, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. It is seven P M.
Regular council meeting will begin promptly at seven oh five.
The Frankie Smith Funeral Home and Crematory in Lancaster and the Johnson Smith Funeral Home in Baltimore have a long and wonderful history of serving our community. Feel free to give us a call at seven four zero six five three zero six five two. Stop in and see us at either of our two locations, four oh five North Columbus Street in Lancaster and two oh seven South Main Street in Baltimore. Respect for tradition, regard for change.
Hi, I'm Brandon Cox from Toys for Kids. Our mission at Toys for Kids is to collect new unwrapped toys and distribute those toys to less fortunate children in our community. So we're really excited to be chosen this month by the Buckeye Cares Program. That means Buckeye will make a generous donation to Toys for Kids with every vehicle sold this month. Hometown community support is vital for helping our local kids in need. Thank you, Buckeye, for supporting our kids.
Please stand if you're able and join me in a moment of prayer.
Thank you for that.
God grant us the serenity to accept the things that we cannot change, the courage to change the things that we can, and the wisdom to know the difference. We'll call the November twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three Lancaster City Council meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Ailers?
Here.
Mr. Ailes?
Here.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Here.
Mr. James?
Here.
Mr. Matlin?
Here.
Mr. McDaniel?
Here.
Mr. Porter?
Here.
Mr. Schoonover?
Here.
And Mrs. Teener?
Here.
Do we have a motion to excuse President Oul?
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion we excuse Mr. Oul.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we will have reading and disposal of the journal.
I'd like to present the regular meeting minutes dated November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the journal.
Second.
Good motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. We have any reports of city officials?
We do. Email dated November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three regarding Martins Park Bridge, submitted by Jeff Barrett, Assistant City Engineer. Series of emails regarding Martin Park Bridge, submitted by Mr. Ailes. Series of emails regarding new member binders and paperwork, submitted by Mr. Porter. Email dated November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three regarding swearing-in, submitted by Mr. Porter. Email dated November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three regarding the cancellation of the IT Telecom meeting, submitted by Mrs. Teener. And finally, an email dated November twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three regarding finance agenda, submitted by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of city officials.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have any communications?
There's one. Letter dated November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three regarding the request for updated list of city elected officials, submitted by Jen Boger, Financial Disclosure Coordinator from the Ohio Ethics Commission.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the communications.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have any special presentations?
There are none to be presented.
Are there any petitions or memorials?
There are none to be presented.
Okay. Are there any voters or taxpayers at this time who would like to address council? Seeing none, we'll move on. Are there any standing committee reports?
There are two. Law Committee meeting minutes dated November first, two thousand twenty-three, submitted by Mrs. Kreitz. And the Finance Committee meeting minutes dated November twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three, submitted by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of standing committees.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to receive and file the reports of standing committees. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are there any reports of special committees?
There are none to be presented.
Does not appear that there are any public hearings tonight, but there will be a public hearing on December eleventh. Two public hearings on December eleventh. Okay. We're now going to move on to the reading of resolutions. Temporary Resolution Number One eleven twenty-three.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance and to amend the certificate of appropriations with the county auditor in the Capital Improvement Fund three zero two zero to cover the cost of Martins Park Pedestrian Bridge Replacement Project and to authorize the Service Safety Director to go out for bids and enter into a contract for the Martins Park Pedestrian Bridge Replacement Project, offered by Mr. McDaniel and seconded by Mrs. Kreitz.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council replace Resolution temporarily numbered one eleven twenty-three by replacing it with Resolution one eleven twenty-three star, as given to the clerk in writing prior to tonight's meeting.
Second?
We have a motion in a second to amend Temporary Resolution one eleven twenty-three and replace it with Temporary Resolution one eleven twenty-three star. Is there any?
Yes, Mr. President, this is what I mentioned at Finance. The numbers actually break down as two hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars coming from the general fund capital improve, I should say, the city capital improvement fund. And ninety-one thousand, two hundred and fifty coming from the Parks Capital Improvement Fund. That's what the amendment is. It was originally, the legislation was written to have the city's capital improvement fund the entire amount, and this is modifying that, seventy-five twenty-five.
Any further discussion on the motion to amend? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ailers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to amend Temporary Resolution one eleven twenty-three and replace it with Temporary Resolution one eleven twenty-three star passes nine to zero. Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Resolution temporarily numbered one eleven twenty-three star.
Second?
We have a motion in a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution one eleven twenty-three star. Discussion?
Nothing further.
Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ailers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution one eleven twenty-three star passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution one twelve dash twenty-three.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the construction for the two thousand twenty-four street improvement program, offered by Mr. Schoonover and seconded by Mr. James.
Mr. Schoonover?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon temporary, yeah, enter upon the written record Temporary Ordinance, a resolution, wow, one twelve twenty-three.
So we're all back from Thanksgiving. That's what it is.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion in a second to pass Temporary Resolution one twelve dash twenty-three. Any discussion?
Just real quick, it's our yearly go-out-to-bid for our street paving. And we started doing this earlier, a couple of years ago, and it seems to get us better results on our bids.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ailers?
Yes.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution one twelve dash twenty-three. Temporary Resolution 112-23 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 113-23.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and enter into contracts for mowing and trimming the city cemeteries offered by Mr. Schoonover and seconded by Mr. James.
Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 11323.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion in a second to pass Temporary Resolution 113-23. Any discussion?
Uh, same idea as the previous, it's just the yearly mowing contracts for the cemeteries.
No additional discussion, please call the roll.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Ales?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 113-23 passes nine to zero. We'll move on to second reading of resolutions with Temporary Resolution 114-23.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance, increase receipts, and to amend the certificate of other sources and appropriations with the County Auditor and the City Income Tax Fund 2016 offered by Mr. McDaniel and seconded by Mr. Ales.
Mr. McDaniel?
Second of three readings.
Second of three readings on Temporary Resolution 114-23. Temporary Resolution 115-23.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance and amend the certificate with the County Auditor and the City Income Tax Fund 2016 to cover income tax refund request offered by Mr. McDaniel and seconded by Mrs. Kreitz.
Mr. McDaniel?
Second of three readings.
Second of three readings on Temporary Resolution 115-23. Temporary Resolution 116-23.
A resolution to increase receipts and appropriate from the unencumbered balance and to amend the certificate with the County Auditor and the Special Improvement District Fund 2020 offered by Mr. McDaniel and seconded by Mr. Ales.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of Resolution temporarily numbered 11623.
Second.
We have a motion in a second on a motion to expand- uh, suspend its rules for Temporary Resolution 116-23. Discussion?
I'll save it.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Ales?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Resolution temporarily numbered 11623.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to pass Temporary Resolution 116-23. Discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. Auditor Nettles advises the city has received 2022 tax assessment settlements from the County Auditor. The amount that we collected was more than anticipated, and as a result, the auditor needs to disburse the additional amount to the CID, and the additional funds were $7,941.05.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Ales?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 116-23 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 117-23.
A resolution to increase and decrease appropriations in the Lancaster Public Transit Program Fund 2021 for additional unexpected costs in the Lancaster Public- or in the Lancaster Fairfield Public Transit as a result of the additional- of the addition of the fifth loop, I apologize, offered by Mr. Schoonover and seconded by Mr. James.
Mr. Schoonover?
A second of three readings?
Second of three readings on Temporary Resolution 11723. Temporary Resolution 118-23.
A resolution to create a new fund, the Transfer Facility Closure Restricted Fund 8038, to set up revenue and expense accounts and declare an emergency offered by Mr. McDaniel and seconded by Mr. Ales.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of Resolution temporarily numbered 11823.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend rules for Temporary Resolution 118-23. Discussion?
I will save it.
Discussion saved. Please call the roll.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Ales?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend Temporary Resolution 11823 passes nine to zero. Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Resolution temporarily numbered 11823.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to pass Temporary Resolution 11823. Discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. We were advised by Superintendent Fowler that the Ohio EPA requires the city of Lancaster establish a restricted fund set aside money to pay for cleanup at our new transfer station should it ever close. Uh, this will establish the appropriate funds.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Ales?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 118-23 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 120-23.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance, amend the certificate with the County Auditor, and complete a fund-to-fund transfer in the Sanitation Fund 6005 and to declare an emergency offered by Mr. Matlin and seconded by Mrs. Kreitz.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of Temporary Resolution 120-23.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to suspend and waive the third reading for Temporary Resolution 120-23. Discussion?
I'll save it.
Hearing none, further discussion, please call the roll.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Ales?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend Temporary Resolution 120-23 passes nine to zero. Mr. Matlin?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 120-23.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to pass and engross upon the written record Temporary Resolution 120-23. Mr. Matlin?
This is a companion piece for the previous resolution. This is the actual money transfer into the new funds to establish a cleanup fund, and if the city were to ever close or have to close the new sanitation, it's a little over $29,000. And each year, the EPA will inform sanitation as to how much that fund needs to be, and they'll keep money in.
Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Ales?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 120-23 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 121-23.
A resolution to amend the 2023 appropriation budgets and amend the certificate of appropriations with the County Auditor offered by Mr. McDaniel and seconded by Mrs. Kreitz.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of Resolution temporarily numbered 12123.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend and waive the third reading of Temporary Resolution 121-23. Discussion?
I'll save it.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Ales?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend third reading Temporary Resolution 121-23 passes nine to zero. Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Resolution temporarily numbered 12123.
Second.
We have a motion to pass and engross upon the written record Temporary Resolution 121-23. Discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this is an annual budget cleanup piece to bring our current year expenses, expense budget in line with the actual cash balances by December 31st.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Ales?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 121-23 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 122-23.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a contract with Vernandez for engineering services offered by Mr. James and seconded by Mrs. Teener.
Mr. James?
Thank you, President Proton Porter. This is the second of three readings.
Second of three readings on Temporary Resolution 122-23. Temporary Resolution, um... Oh, 120, one, excuse me, yes. Temporary Resolution 123-23.
A resolution to make appropriations for the current 2024 budget expenses and other expenditures of the city of Lancaster, state of Ohio for the fiscal year 2024 and to establish line item transfer authority for departments offered by Mr. McDaniel and seconded by Mr. Ales.
Second of third reading.
Second of three readings on Temporary Resolution 123-23. Move on to first readings. Temporary Resolution 124-23.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the construction of pickleball courts at Olive Dale Park for the Lancaster Parks and Recreation Department and to declare an emergency offered by Mr. Porter and seconded by Mrs. Kreitz.
First of two readings.
First of two readings on Temporary Resolution 124-23. Temporary Resolution 125-23.
A resolution to increase and decrease appropriations in the Muni Court Judicial Drug Court Adam H. Fund 2039 and to declare an emergency offered by Mr. McDaniel and seconded by Mrs. Kreitz.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of Resolution temporarily numbered 12523.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to suspend rules and waive the second and third readings of Temporary Resolution 125-23. Discussion?
I will save it.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Ales?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend Temporary Resolution 12523, second and third readings passes nine to zero. Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Resolution temporarily numbered 12523.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to pass Temporary Resolution 125-23. Discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. We had Tamera Bartek give us a presentation at Finance Committee regarding the Veterans Treatment Court that Judge Fields administers. This is a federal grant that we've received. However, as a result of that, we must track these funds separately from existing accounts, and this will allow us to move forward with that process. This grant actually began because of federal fiscal years different than the city's fiscal year, October 1st.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Ales?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 125-23 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 126-23.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance and amend the certificate of appropriations with the County Auditor in the .45 Police and Fire Levy 2021 Fund 2051 and to declare an emergency offered by Mr. McDaniel and seconded by Mr. Ales.
Mr. McDaniel?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of Resolution temporarily numbered 12623.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to waive the second and third readings of Temporary Resolution 126-23. Discussion?
I'll save it.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Ales?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. James? resolution one twenty-six dash twenty-three. Discussion?
I'll save it.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Ales?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend second and third reading on temporary resolution one twenty-six dash twenty-three passes nine to zero. Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass, engross, and enter upon the written record resolution temporarily numbered one twenty-six twenty-three.
Second. We have a motion and a second to pass temporary resolution one twenty-six dash twenty-three. Discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, Chief Snyder explained this to us at Finance. This is a matter of moving money from one account to another to pay for police overtime, specifically for police overtime that was budgeted or that should have been budgeted for the large-scale events. He wants to make sure he has funding in place to pay the end-of-the-year overtime costs for the officers.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Ales?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary resolution one twenty-six dash twenty-three passes nine to zero. Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass, engross, and enter upon the written record resolution temporarily numbered one twenty-six twenty-three.
Second. We have a motion and a second to pass temporary resolution one twenty-six dash twenty-three. Discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, we had Tamara Bartek give us a presentation at Finance Committee regarding the Veterans Treatment Court that Judge Fields administers. This is a federal grant that we've received. However, as a result of that, we must track these funds separately from existing accounts, and this will allow us to move forward with that process. This grant actually began because the federal fiscal year is different than the city's fiscal year, October 1st.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Ales?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary resolution one twenty-five dash twenty-three passes nine to zero. Mr. McDaniel? Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass, engross, and enter upon the written record resolution temporarily numbered one twenty-five twenty-three.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to pass temporary resolution one twenty-nine dash twenty-three. Discussion?
No.
Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Ales?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary resolution one twenty-nine dash twenty-three passes nine to zero. Temporary resolution one thirty dash twenty-three.
A resolution authorizing the service safety director to enter into a local public agency, federal, local, let project agreement with the State of Ohio Department of Transportation for the East Sixth Avenue Bridge over Fetter's Run Replacement Project PID 120475 and authorize the service safety director to enter into design pre-construction services contracts with various consultants offered by Mr. Schoonover and seconded by Mr. James.
Mr. Schoonover?
First of two readings.
First of two readings on temporary resolution one thirty dash twenty-three. Temporary resolution one thirty-one dash twenty-three.
A resolution authorizing the service safety director to enter into a local public authority, federal, local, let project agreement with the State of Ohio Department of Transportation for the Boving Road Improvement Project PID 120485 offered by Mr. Schoonover and seconded by Mr. Porter.
Mr. Schoonover?
First of two readings.
First of two readings on temporary resolution one thirty-one twenty-three. Temporary resolution one thirty-two dash twenty-three.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a pre-annexation agreement with Double Boogie Holdings LLC for personal numbers 0270035930 and 0270035900, consisting of four five point one plus minus acres in Pleasant Township and to declare an emergency offered by Mr. Ales and seconded by Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. Ales?
First of two readings.
First of two readings on temporary resolution one thirty-two dash twenty-three. Are there any further resolutions come before council this evening? Hearing none, we're going to move on to reading of ordinances with temporary ordinance twenty-eight twenty-three.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of revenue notes in the aggregate principal amount of $820,127.52 to pay costs of improving Edie Road Memorial Drive and Michael's Way by grading, widening, paving, curbing, and improving bridges and railroad crossings, relocating utilities, and installing sidewalks, traffic signals and signs, and water sanitary and stormwater lines and facilities, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto and declaring an emergency offered by Mr. McDaniel and seconded by Mr. Ales.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass, engross, and enter upon the written record ordinance temporarily numbered twenty-eight twenty-three.
Second. We have a motion and a second to pass temporary ordinance twenty-eight twenty-three. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this is in relation to the financing ordinance for the Edie Road TIF. These are funds that the developers provided for the completion of the improvements and are repaid using funds from the TIF developers, and no city money is involved.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Ales?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary ordinance twenty-eight twenty-three passes nine to zero. Temporary ordinance ordinance twenty-nine twenty-three.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of a revenue note in the aggregate principal amount of $254,392.13 to reimburse Flagstar Bank FSB for a draw on a letter of credit in connection with cost of improving Edie Road Memorial Drive and Michael's Way by grading, widening, paving, curbing, and improving bridges and railroad crossings, relocating utilities, and installing sidewalks, traffic signals and signs, and water sanitary and stormwater lines and facilities, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto and declaring an emergency offered by Mr. McDaniel and seconded by Mrs. Kreitz.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass, engross, and enter upon the written record ordinance temporarily numbered twenty-nine twenty-three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass temporary ordinance twenty-nine twenty-three. Discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this is a second ordinance dealing with the Edie Road TIF, the same explanation as previously given.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Ales?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary ordinance twenty-nine dash twenty-three passes nine to zero. Temporary ordinance thirty-one dash twenty-three.
An ordinance to establish the benefits, titles, and compensation for management professional personnel employed by the City of Lancaster, Ohio for the year 2024 and to declare an emergency offered by Mr. McDaniel and seconded by Mrs. Kreitz.
Mr. McDaniel?
Second of three readings.
Second of three readings temporary ordinance thirty-one dash twenty-three. Temporary ordinance thirty-two dash twenty-three.
An ordinance to establish benefits, titles, and compensation for parks and recreation personnel employed by the City of Lancaster, Ohio for the year 2024 and to declare an emergency offered by Mr. McDaniel and seconded by Mr. Ales.
Mr. McDaniel?
Second of three readings.
Second of three readings on temporary ordinance thirty-two dash twenty-three. Temporary ordinance thirty-three dash twenty-three.
An ordinance to establish benefits, titles, and compensation for the transit personnel employed by the City of Lancaster, Ohio for the year 2024 and to declare an emergency offered by Mr. McDaniel and seconded by Mrs. Kreitz.
Second of three readings.
Second of three readings on temporary ordinance thirty-three dash twenty-three. Temporary ordinance thirty-four dash twenty-three.
An ordinance to establish the benefits, titles, and compensation for the Information Technology Administrator Office of the Clerk of Court employed by the City of Lancaster, Ohio commencing the first pay period of 2024 and to declare an emergency offered by Mr. McDaniel and seconded by Mr. Ales.
Mr. McDaniel?
Second of three readings.
Second of three readings on temporary ordinance thirty-four dash twenty-three. Temporary ordinance thirty-five dash twenty-three.
An ordinance to establish the benefits, titles, and compensation for the Fairfield County Municipal Court Management and professional personnel employed by the City of Lancaster, Ohio for the year 2024 and to declare an emergency offered by Mr. McDaniel and seconded by Mrs. Kreitz.
Mr. McDaniel?
Second of three readings.
Second of three readings on temporary ordinance thirty-five dash twenty-three. Temporary ordinance thirty-six dash twenty-three.
An ordinance to establish benefits, titles, and compensation for Fairfield County Municipal Court Judicial and probation personnel employed by the City of Lancaster, Ohio for the fiscal, pardon me, for the year 2024 and to declare an emergency offered by Mr. McDaniel and seconded by Mr. Ales.
Mr. McDaniel?
Second of three readings.
Second of three readings on temporary ordinance thirty-six dash twenty-three. Temporary ordinance thirty-seven dash twenty-three.
An ordinance to establish the benefits, titles, and compensation for seasonal interns employed by the City of Lancaster, Ohio commencing during the summer of 2024 and to declare an emergency offered by Mr. McDaniel and seconded by Mrs. Kreitz.
Mr. McDaniel?
Second of three readings.
Second of three readings on temporary ordinance thirty-seven dash twenty-three. Temporary ordinance thirty-eight dash twenty-three.
An ordinance to repeal and replace Lancaster Codified Ordinance Part One Administrative Code Title IX Taxation, Chapter 183 Municipal Income Tax effective January 1, 2018 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Lancaster offered by Mr. McDaniel and seconded by Mr. Ales.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of ordinance temporarily numbered thirty-eight twenty-three.
Second.
Is it just one reading? He suspended. He should have suspended. Just one.
Did you suspend the third reading?
Just the third.
Didn't I say third?
I'm sorry, I wasn't.
You said second, third. Is it just third?
We're on the second, so we're suspending the third.
Okay, all right. All right, we have a motion to suspend the third reading of temporary ordinance thirty-eight dash twenty-three. Discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this was a, as a result of House Bill 33 passed by the 135th General Assembly, signed into law by the governor, we are required to adopt and amend portions of the Lancaster City ordinances to comply with the changes, and that's what this is.
Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Ales?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the third reading of temporary ordinance thirty-eight dash twenty-three passes nine to zero. Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass, engross, and enter upon the written record ordinance temporarily numbered thirty-eight twenty-three.
Second. We have a motion and a second to pass temporary ordinance thirty-eight dash twenty-three. Any further discussion?
Nothing further.
Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Ales?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend temporary ordinance forty-two dash twenty-three. Second?
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum principal amount of $475,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying the cost of the construction and replacement of Miller Park Water Treatment Plant and acquisition of real property and appurtenances necessary therefore, and the acquisition, construction, and installation of wells, raw water distribution piping, excuse me, approximately 5,300 feet of water lines, new fire hydrants and appurtenances along Wiley Road and Magna Avenue between certain termini, each including design and engineering work and together with all necessary appurtenances thereto and declaring an emergency offered by Mr. McDaniel and seconded by Mr. Ales.
Thank you for reading that book. We appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Mr. McDaniel?
It's the second of three readings.
Second of three readings on temporary ordinance, making sure I got the right one, forty dash twenty-three. Temporary ordinance forty-two dash twenty-three.
Am I appointing right, right? An ordinance, an ordinance. An ordinance to amend the zoning map subject to passage of the annexation of 8.9 plus minus acres in Greenfield Township and to declare an emergency offered by Mr. Ales and seconded by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Ales?
Second of three readings.
Second of three readings on temporary ordinance forty-two dash twenty-three. There is a public hearing set on that particular ordinance for December 11 at 6:30. We're moving on to first reading of temporary ordinance forty-three dash twenty-three.
An ordinance authorizing the execution of a master equipment lease, sorry, my voice, purchase agreement and related equipment scheduled for the purpose of acquiring two Kubota LX26 tractors with loaders and a Kubota RTV XG 850 utility vehicle and related appurtenances for the Lancaster Cemetery Department and declaring an emergency offered by Mr. McDaniel and seconded by Mrs. Kreitz.
Mr. McDaniel?
First of two readings.
First of two readings on temporary ordinance forty-three twenty-three. Temporary ordinance forty-four dash twenty-three.
An ordinance authorizing the execution of a master equipment lease purchase agreement and related equipment schedule for the purpose of acquiring a Dodge Ram 4500 cab and chassis, a Dodge Ram 2500 pickup truck, an 11-foot gallon dump truck bed, a Penguin hydraulic system, a Faken rotary knife mower head, and an Ace body utility truck bed and related appurtenances for the Lancaster Department of Transportation and declaring an emergency offered by Mr. McDaniel and seconded by Mr. Ales.
Mr. McDaniel?
First of two.
First of two readings on temporary ordinance forty-four dash twenty-three. Temporary ordinance forty-five dash twenty-three.
An ordinance establishing a new Chapter 377 of the Lancaster Codified Ordinances entitled Utility Vehicles offered by Mrs. Kreitz and seconded by Mrs. Teener.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes, first of three readings.
First of three readings on temporary ordinance forty-five dash twenty-three. Temporary ordinance forty-six dash twenty-three.
An ordinance to amend the zoning map subject to passage of the annexation of Metro Developments 8.9 plus minus acres in Greenfield Township and to declare an emergency offered by Mr. Ales and seconded by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Ales?
First of three readings.
First of three readings on temporary ordinance forty-six twenty-three. There will be a public hearing set for this ordinance December 11 at 6:30 p.m. Temporary ordinance forty-seven dash twenty-three.
An ordinance to amend Lancaster Codified Ordinance Part One Administrative Code Title IX Taxation, Chapter 183 Municipal Income Tax effective January 1, 2018, Section 183.013 Allocation of Funds of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Lancaster and to declare an emergency offered by Mr. McDaniel and seconded by Mrs. Kreitz.
Mr. McDaniel?
First of two readings.
First of two readings on temporary ordinance forty-seven dash twenty-three. Temporary ordinance forty-eight dash twenty-three.
An ordinance authorizing the service safety director to contract with the Lancaster Fairfield County Amateur Radio Club for the use of City of Lancaster radio towers and access to the supporting radio buildings next to the towers offered by Mrs. Teener and seconded by Mr. Ayers.
Mrs. Teener?